Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All our housekeeping motions from before are still in order, so we don't have to go through those. I'll remind everyone that, um... Please wait to be recognized before one speaks, and that, um, chairs speak for their committees and boards. Okay, and... We can go right to Article 9. Accessory Dwelling Units Bylaw Amendment. Now, this is one... Alright, um... Hopefully, everybody got this, this book, and read it. Because I am going to ask for permission not to have to read it. If that is acceptable? On favor? Thank you. Yes, I don't think you want to listen to me read for forever. So it is, uh, moved, if the article has been moved and seconded by Ways and Means Committee, and it is as was presented to you now. Liz, your opportunity to speak.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, so I'm gonna start my presentation, if that's okay? Alright, so for the record, I'm Liz Von Ventry, I'm the Planning Director, and I'm here to present Article 9, which is about the Protected Use Accessory Dwelling Unit Bylaw Amendment. This has been kind of a wild ride, but, so, just bear with me, and, um, you know, everything will be revealed at the end. So, what is it that we're trying to solve? So, today, in our current bylaw, homeowners can build an acc- can build an accessory dwelling unit, but only if their home is at least 1,800 square feet and was built prior to 1989. So this is just kind of an old bylaw that was in there, don't know why. In August of this year, the governor signed the Affordable Homes Act into law, which allows accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, on all single-family zoned properties across the straight state by right. So, um, you know, anybody can go in to, you know, get a building permit for an ADU, and that goes into effect on February 7th. So, on February 7th, if somebody wanted to go in, speak to the Building Department, they could, um, they could file for an accessory dwelling unit to be built on their property. This warrant also brings our zoning bylaw into, you know, better compliance with state law and provides our own additional local regulations. So the real purpose of this is to add our own local regulations to the existing law that the state just, um, just approved. So, what exactly does the state think an ADU is? So, what it is, um, this is directly from the law, it's a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling. So, this can be a basement conversion ADU, we can have a, you could do a converted garage, a detached ADU, um, you can do an attached ADU. You can choose not to do an ADU if you so choose. However, if you do, it must maintain a separate entrance. It cannot be larger than half the gross square air, gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. So if you have a 1,500-square-foot ranch, um, and you apply for an ADU, you can't build a 900-square-foot ADU. It is subject to such additional restrictions that may be imposed by a municipality. That's what we're trying to do here. And it also adheres to the additional rules and regulations that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has disseminated. So, why is there an amendment to this article? So, we knew that the law came into effect in August. I've been working with the Planning Board, we drafted a bylaw, and we went through the regular town meeting process where we vetted with the board, and it was voted and approved on December 5th. On December 6th, unbeknownst to anybody, the state disseminated additional rules and regulations beyond what we had anticipated in our original bylaw. So, in working with Town Council and with my board, we got together, amended the article to the best of our abilities, knowing that these rules and regs were still in their draft form. So we've been really working on making sure that there's something on the books for the town, even though the rules and regs are still in their draft form. You know, professionally, I think it's important for us to have something on the books. So, that leads us to today, which is why you guys have an amended, um, an amended bylaw. So... So, what did we have to change? Kind of what, what, what changed? The biggest thing is the, what the state said was, or the, yeah, the state said, lot size, lot coverage, open space, and the height of ADUs cannot be more restrictive than the requirements of single-family dwellings. And so, we had to do the original amendment, we had to, the original bylaw, we had to amend it. One, there are things that we can do. So, the rules and regs said that we can cap the number of ADUs. So we've capped them to one ADU per single-family house lot. We aren't required to allow mobile or manufactured homes as an ADU, because they cannot be inspected by the building inspector, because they're completely, um, there's, you know, they're already built, you can't go in and look at the wiring and make sure it's up to Massachusetts codes. Which is why we are allowed to, um, we do have to allow modular dwelling units. So, that's where, you know, parts of a house are built off-site, and then they kind of drop it in on a, um, on a prefab foundation. So, again, what are we regulating? So this is basically what is in the amended bylaw. Again, one ADU per lot. We're stating that, um, you know, the attached, any attached ADU entrance must be on the side or rear of the principal dwelling. If two entrances exist, we are saying that the ADU must appear subordinate to the, um, the main single-family dwelling, the principal dwelling. Stairways to a second-floor ADU must be enclosed in exterior walls. So if you are putting an ADU on a detached garage, you can't just have decking, deck stairs going up to the ADU, that needs to be enclosed. You need to have one designated off-street parking space, but this is only if you are outside of half a mile of a bus stop. Um, and that's, that's in the, in your bylaw. It must be connected to the municipal water and sewer system. We are including language that says that the detached ADU can't, should not be located between the frontage of the house and the roadway. So, you know, don't put, you're a detached ADU in the front of the house, in front of the principal dwelling. And then, you know, basic things, you know, detached ADU should be accessible from a path or walkway. And so, with that, um, I will open it up to questions, Mr. Moderator.
Well, we, we need to hear from applicable boards, Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Gaffney, Planning Board. So I'd like to thank staff on this, uh, you know, as this law came into effect, again, they had to navigate the complex state laws that were acquired on us. I think they did a good job with that. The regulations that came in last minute actually were in line with what the board had, had concerns about with regard to, you know, trailers and having multiple ADU units on there. So this was a 6-0-0 approval, and if this does not get approved, basically, there are no guardrails against the state with the state law. So anybody come in, and they could put multiple units on there, they could, you know, do anything that we didn't put from a local level, so it's, it's, it would be fairly wide open. So we try to put some guardrails around the state law. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Certainly. Land Use Committee. Mr. Waddila.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dave Waddila, Waddila, Land Use Committee. Accessory dwelling units, seven favorable, zero opposed, zero abstained. In our discussion on the favorable side, this adds controls into the state legislation designed to maintain the look and feel of Burlington residential areas, and, um, can be implemented before the state legislation goes into effect. Generally unfavorable, there is displeasure with the state for setting this mandate. So, not sure what we can do with that, but there it is.
Land Use, uh, so, ZBRC. Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Shari Ellis, Chair of ZBRC. We voted 6-0 in favor of this. Can I have a point of information question?
Certainly.
With the microphone? When we vote on this article, can it be placed up on the screen so we can see it?
The whole article?
Well, I mean, at least part of it that's up there, so we can see that it's the amended version.
You don't trust me?
It's nine pages, it's nine pages, I mean, what part would she want up there?
One, just the front page. Amy's gonna do her best. Alright, I guess now we will open it up for discussions. Mr. Monaco, and then we'll get to David here.
One, two, three, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. I noticed that we put the restriction that there can only be one ADU per, per lot. But it doesn't say anything about lots that might be three-quarters of an acre or an acre, and there aren't many, but there are some. Whereas with the state regulation, there's no restriction. I, I don't know what the state says is the number of ADUs you can have on a lot, and I'm just curious why we didn't take into consideration the rare but possible case of a, a bigger house or a bigger lot, where they could maybe possibly do one off of a garage and one in the back. I'm just curious, it's kind of a Planning Board issue, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monaco. Liz?
Um, so, I can answer that. So, I think what you're getting at is, um, you know, talking about pre-existing, non-conforming lots. And so, this, um, I don't believe, I believe that the state regs say that if you have a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, you're still allowed to have one ADU. It's a protected-use ADU, is what they're calling it. And also, that, um, you know, we are regulating, and the state has said that cities and towns can regulate the number of ADUs per, if you're in a, a per-single-family lot. So it doesn't matter how big your lot is, how big your house is. We are putting in the measure that it's, if you have an, are in an RO, a single-family zone, you can only put in one ADU, whether your lot is, you know, 10,000 square feet, or half an acre, or two acres. Did that, yeah, is that?
Testing, just to follow up, Mr. Moderator. The thrust of my question is if you happen to have a much bigger lot, like an acre, and probably a bigger house, or a barn or something, why did we feel the necessity to still, to restrict those rare cases to a single ADU? I don't see the need for that. I'm not sure it matters that much, but I'm curious, at least. Thank you. You see what I'm asking? Thank you.
Comment from Town Council?
Um, Mr. Monaco, I think the, the discussion at the Planning Board meeting was for those situations which were different than one. Because the regulations came out last minute and they had to have changes, that the Planning Board is gonna consider moving forward with a special permit for those different situations, like more than one ADU, as they move forward. And that was the discussion at the Planning Board. So right now, they wanted to get in place a protection relative to the one ADU that you're allowed by right, and then have a later discussion about having more than one or other situations that would require a special permit.
Mr. Webb. Or Wood, excuse me. Two W's, you sit beside each other.
Law firm. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Woods, Precinct 7. Couple of clarifying questions is a, you mentioned manufactured versus modular. So a house that's built in two sections, is that manufactured, or is that a modular?
The, from what I understand, it's based upon the idea of making sure that your local building inspector can inspect the internal workings of the home to make sure that they're up to building, state building code standards. So if there are two sections of a house that are put together, and the building inspector, it's drywalls up, they can't inspect the plumbing or the wiring, that's where I think that is, is the issue, is with, with why they say you can do modular and not mobile. Because mobile is, it's all in one unit, that's it.
So, the state building code actually has a definition for all of these, and so basically, the ones that can't be inspected under the state building code are not allowed, and the ones that can be inspected are permitted. But they are defined under the state building code.
And I just had one other question, Mr. Moderator, if I could. Thank you. So if someone, you know, five or 10 years ago, put on an addition to their house as an in-law apartment, and they wanted to rent it to someone who is not family, and, does it have to be re-inspected to qualify under ADU? Or is it exempt, or, in other words, let's just say there's no external entry to the in-law apartment, you basically go through the front door, and then you go to the back of the house, or wherever it is. How do we address that?
So, it's a, that, those, in those instances, and we talked about this, it's really a pre-existing, non-conforming situation, where, um, those that are existing, we, as a town, can't, you know, go, unless somebody comes to the Building Department and says, um, you know, "I want to re-categorize my in-law area as an ADU", and they let the building inspectors inspect everything and go through the correct channels. But we don't have any recourse right now over pre-existing, non-conforming areas.
And I just want to add on that. So if you had a valid in-law apartment, it is allowed to stay as an ADU, but it has to meet the building code requirements. So now it's considered a separate dwelling unit, so you would still have to meet the building code requirements, which are separate from the zoning requirements. So they can't call it an in-law, and it can be an ADU, but it has to meet the building code requirements.
Okay, I don't know what all the requirements are, but thank you.
Ms. Walensky.
Sarah Walensky, Precinct 5. Uh, I have a clarifying question also. I saw language in the warrant about you can't have an ADU be a short-term rental, like an Airbnb. What are the allowed rental or owning situations that are allowed for these? I guess you can rent it the normal way, could it be a condo? Could you sell it separately to someone who was, you know, not in your family, for example?
So, we cannot regulate, um, so a lot of cities and towns in their ADU bylaws previously stated, you know, the ADU has to be rented to a family member. The state has said that you can't regulate who you're renting it out to. Condoization, um, kind of, you know, we don't... We can't necessarily dictate who is buying the unit, or how it's being separated. But, um, you know, the intent of this bylaw is to, you know, maintain single-family neighborhoods as single-family neighborhoods, while still, um, you know, trying to adhere to this new law and fit it in in a way that's safe and comfortable, and, you know, will, you know, is aesthetically pleasing to, um, to people who live here.
So just to follow up on that. So you could have one lot, two separate owners on the same lot, under this bylaw? That's not allowed? Okay. I mean, a condo is owned by somebody else?
Right.
That's not allowed, okay. Thank you.
Mr. DiTucci. And then we'll get to Mr. Maury, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan DiTucci, Precinct 6. Liz, do you see, um, on a lot of the new construction that's going on in town now, tear downs, whatever you want to call them, some done by builders and some actually done by individuals? Would this be a good opportunity for this person who's building this house to put an ADU unit in?
So, speaking, you know, not professionally, but personally, I think, I think it...
By law, I'm saying, by law, that's what I meant, by law.
By law, yes, you, on, on February 7th?
Right.
Yes, you could.
Okay, so he can now not only build a house, but he can also have something ready there? That, that, he, he would not be able to rent it, though, the, the builder? It would have to be the homeowner to rent it?
I mean, whoever owns the property would be the one? So if the builder were to own the, the house, or, I mean, it would be, it would be whoever owns the property would be the one?
Whoever, the, the title, that's, where the title is, okay. But I just wanted to, you know, ask that question. And then again, it can only be 900 square feet?
The maximum it can be is 900 square feet. But that's only, you know, it can't be more than half your orig- the, your original square footage. So if you have a 1,500-square-foot ranch, you can't build a 900-square-foot ADU. With these new houses that are 2,000, 3,000 square feet, 900 would be...
The max.
Allowed, yeah, but that's the very maximum amount.
That's a good point. Alright, thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bruce Maury, Precinct 1, 2, and maybe the Planning Board, and maybe the town administration, couple of questions. How many, I guess, ADUs do we have in town? Do we have any in town now?
So, we do...
Including in-laws, I, I'd never even thought about in-laws, and now we have to re-review all the existing in-law apartments and all that? So how many do we have?
I wish I knew the answer to that question, honestly. So it's something that we've been trying to mine information through the Building Department, because it's, it's ultimately building permits, and they don't necessar-, from what I understand, and I've asked, they don't necessarily, you know, categorize building permits by whether or not this is an ADU, or this is gonna be an in-law apartment, or this is a kitchen renovation. And so, we do have them. I think every, you know, they do exist. As to how many of them there are now, I could not tell you. One of the provisions of this new law is that now cities and towns will need to track and monitor and provide the state the number of ADU units that are built. From going forward, that data will need to be provided.
Okay, additional question. Has the town, or the Planning Board, or administration done any expect, or any plans, or any projections on how many we are going to face with this new legislation and with this new policy?
So, I can tell you that we have, people have been asking. We don't, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head for how many this could be. I do know that minimum amount that you're, for a detached ADU, you know, you're gonna talk about $300,000 to kind of build a detached ADU. So, you know, um, it's not a small endeavor to do it. Obviously, if it's, if it's attached, or, you know, basement, it's less. But, um, you know, we do expect to see probably a few, more at the beginning, and then probably tapering off, but I don't have that projection for you, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Last question is, um, has the town, from an infrastructure standpoint, thought about the potential drain on services, water, sewer, with this, with this new volume or new opportunity to deal with the housing crisis and aging population and all that?
Yes, um, we, I can, so, the engineering department, um, you know, they maintain information about, you know, how much water we have in sewer, and there is sewer capacity, there is water capacity. And so, from that standpoint, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm generally supportive of this, I just, I'm concerned about the logistics and the kind of the, I guess, the real counts of potential volume of these units, so thank you.
Murna, you had a question, and then I'm gonna come down here to a resident who has a question, Susan Cadillac. I don't want someone slipping in a, you know, motion to, to close argument before she gets a chance to speak. So, Murna, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Murna Saltman, Precinct 2. How does this addition affect lot lines, the perimeter of the property, and how close it comes to neighbors, and what the, the lot dimensions are? The limitations were previously?
Sure, so, um, this bylaw does not change the setback requirements for single-family property. So, the existing requirement, setback requirement, so from your lot line, you can't, there's a no-build zone, you can't build 15 feet from both sides and you, and the back. So you have to be in 15 feet, and then it's 25 feet in the front of your house. The ADU must stay within the buildable area. So you can't build an ADU directly on the lot line.
Thank you. And has conservation have been involved in any decision on this, or should they be?
So, um, I know that I've spoken with Eileen on this. I think that, you know, for her bylaws, it's, um, you know, based on the square, just, square footage of disturbance. And so, any ADU would still have to meet state, DEP, and local stormwater requirements. So there's no exemption there.
And lastly, how many wonderful 126-town meeting members are here tonight, Mr. Moderator?
At last count, 71, but we've had a few more come in since then. Ms. Cadillac, you had comments to make, my microphone down here, please.
Thank you. Okay, Susan Cadillac, Precinct 6, also local builder. We work most of our projects, 75% of our homeowners also involved in the State Building Association. So just wanted to share some comments. Before I do, someone asked about condos. So I've been in real estate for over 20 years, and typically, you cannot convert a unit to a condo unless it's a legal two-family. And what this is, is an accessory used to a single-family home. So even though you can rent it, and it's a separate dwelling, it's still a single-family home. And from what I've read, the state's goal, and I don't know about Burlington in particular, but the state's goal is to see 8,000 to 10,000 rental, rental units added over the next five years. So, a couple concerns that I had about this, um, on the ADU laws is, in Article 9, um, the first concern is the restrictions under the applicability requirements. The stairways to the primary entrance located on the second or third story should be enclosed within exterior walls. All motor vehicles owned or maintained by occupants shall be parked off-street in a designated driver area or garage, makes sense. But then it also says that the location and appearance of such driveway area shall not adversely affect adjoining properties or the single-family character of the neighborhood in general. And then it says that driveways should be designed in a way to reduce the amount of impervious surface. I have, usually don't see driveways added that reduce impervious surface. And as someone mentioned, we do have a very thorough stormwater bylaw that would come into effect based on the size of the project. And when you look at the state regulations, um, they're, they have a list of what they consider unreasonable regulations. And one of them is the design standards. And the design standards say that an unreasonable regulation would include any design standard that would not be applied to a single-family residential dwelling in the zoning district in which the protected ADU is located. So, when we look at the ones that I just read off, those are not restrictions that we currently have on our single-family homes. So these additional rules shouldn't be imposed on protected-use ADUs. We already have the stormwater bylaw. We do not currently let our neighbors decide how our driveway is gonna be situated before we install it. And enclosing the exterior stairways may unfairly negatively impact ADUs located on an upper level, because enclosed areas could be included in the total gross, gross floor area. So that's reducing the total liv- livable area of the unit. And then, the second thing... And then the second thing is the siding standards, which is the requirement that you can't build between the house and the roadway. And again, an unreasonable standard listed by the state is any requirement concerning dimensional standards, setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera, that you don't apply to a single-family dwelling unless it's more permissive. So by adding that no-build zone in front of a house, you're making it more restrictive, which is considered unreasonable by the state. These were discussed at the planning board meeting on January 16th. Town council flagged them, but the board decided to go ahead and include them anyway. So I just wanted to point out that those are in there. If this passes as written, it could be confusing for the building inspector and homeowners who are looking at what the state allows you to do as of right and what Burlington is saying you can do. So it puts the Building Department in an awkward position because they have to decide, do I follow the state law, which is what they're supposed to do? Or do I follow the planning board? Like, what do I do? So they're kind of in a weird position. And that it's going to have some homeowners who have unnecessary delays in burden of time and cost. If this amendment doesn't pass as written, then the state law still goes into effect, just without the confusing restrictions that shouldn't be in there. I know that this was rushed, and I know that it was a tight timeframe, but I don't know that that is a reason to put in restrictions that shouldn't be there. Thank you.
Ms. Callahan, comment?
So, again, the, you know, the intent of this and the, you know, why we're putting this in is to have some restrictions based upon what the state is saying. And so, you know, as long as there is a reasonable relationship to a valid government purpose, you know, the state will consider these things. So, you know, a value, you know, a government purpose. So in the zoning bylaw, it states that, you know, we need to maintain, you know, property values. And, you know, the state, you know, by saying you can't put your ADU in the front yard of your house of a, in a single-family neighborhood, you know, I think that's a reasonable argument. So...
Town council, is a comment?
And I would just point out that the preface prior to what the resident said earlier is backed up by what the planner said. In fact, it says that an unreasonable regulation is not unreasonable if it serves a municipal, a legitimate municipal interest which is sought to be achieved by zoning bylaw and is rationally related to that municipal interest.
Mr. DeBona.
Good evening. Jeff DeBona, Precinct 3. So this goes into effect on February 2nd, correct?
7th.
I read 2nd, but that's all right. So this bylaw, if passed tonight, this doesn't become into effect for 90 days, correct? It becomes constructively into effect in 90 days. Is that correct?
So it has to go to the Attorney General to approve the zoning bylaw. My understanding is that the Attorney General is trying to turn all of the ADU bylaws around in pretty efficient fashion. So the 90 days is the most. But I have seen the bylaws get turned around by the Attorney General's office in a quicker time period. So it may not be ready by February 7th, but it might be ready by February 15th or February 28th.
Okay. So, but in that interim period between the 7th and whenever it passes, there are no bylaws, correct?
Well, that's correct. This is pending, and you have the state law.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Eiler, Precinct 6. So I think Mr. DeBona raised a very good point there, which is if we don't pass this or delay, then we're stuck with the state law. And I think the intent of this proposed bylaw is really to help maintain the character of the town. So, I doubt anyone here wants to see a mini ADU in their neighbor's front yard, much like we wouldn't want to see, you know, a shed there or whatever. So the point is to make us not be the next Somerville, where every house is stacked right next to another house and, you know, they're three layers deep. You know, personally, my goal is not to jam the most people possible into the town. And I think that's why people move to Burlington, is that they want to live in a place where they could actually see grass in the backyard and not see, you know, 10 ADUs in their large neighbor's backyard or what have you. So I think the purpose of this is very good in that it helps maintain character of town within the confines of what the state is requiring us to do. And I think any potential issues that are there, there's always that risk with a bylaw. But it would be a mistake to say because it's not 100% perfect, perhaps, that we shouldn't do anything. Because, at least from my point of view, it's pretty clear that the state law is very far from where we want to be. So we should do our best with this, with this attempt, and pass the bylaw, would be my recommendation. If for some reason it isn't approved by Attorney General, we can take another shot at it. And we're no worse off than if we hadn't tried at all. So I would definitely recommend that we vote for this.
Mr. Ruffield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Ruffield, Precinct 5. So, one specific one that I'm not sure about is, what is the concern with having an ADU in front of the house? Because as far as I can tell, like, my neighbors can do what they want with their yard, and I can do what I want with our yard, as long as it doesn't, you know, cause a flood in the neighborhood or something like that. So I'm just wondering why we need that in the first place and how it's going to benefit the town having that regulation, apart from the character of the town or of not being the next Somerville? Something a little more concrete?
Ms. Callahan.
So I think that the thought behind that is preserving property value. So I think that, you know, single-family homeowners, you know, living in a single-family, you know, residential area has certain property value. If ADUs are, you know, if people are just putting sheds in their front yards, you know, I think that there is a perception. And I mean, I haven't done the analysis on Zillow or Realtor.com, but there's a perception that that could decrease the value of the neighborhood, making it not seem like it is a single-family neighborhood and more like a 2 or 3 or a more dense neighborhood. So I think that's the thought process behind it.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Jeremy Harrington, Precinct 2. I'm curious, because this is going through the Building Department, if somebody has a non-conforming lot or an issue with their lot, is there going to be a process to go through the zoning board if, say, there's wetlands in the back and they want to position an ADU somewhere that is non-conforming by the letter of the law?
So, any dimensional requirement? So if any, if a homeowner wants to change a dimensional requirement, so if they want to be within the 15-foot setback, if it's a number, then those items in the bylaw can go to the ZBA. So, there's that.
In addition, any pre-existing non-conforming lot still would have to go through the ZBA process for the dimensional controls. The ZBA couldn't prohibit the use, but they would have to go through the process through the ZBA just in accordance with the same non-conforming requirements in the zoning bylaw today.
Mr. Sacks. And we'll go back to Ms. Manning in a bit.
John Sacks, Precinct 7. Just curious, what would be the effect of real estate taxes somebody pays if they have an ADU? Would their taxes go up a bit? Would that prove a little bit more money to the town?
I believe so. It's, you know, your assessed value would more than likely go up by adding an ADU onto your property, yes.
Ms. Manning. All right, in the back there, right there.
Rose Manning, Precinct 6. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That was my question, how you were going to assess these new properties now that they have ADUs on them. And my other question is, is there a height restriction on the ADU in the rear? Or anywhere it's placed?
So, originally, when we brought this in December, the first version of this bylaw did have a height restriction. But due to the new regulations stating that we can't have additional, you know, you know, additional regulations beyond the RO zone, we got rid of them. And the height in the RO zone, the maximum height, is 30 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the Planning Director, I believe. Couple questions. The rule about parking when within a half a mile of a transit station, does that mean literally a subway station or a train station? Or does that mean a bus stop? Because we have an off, we have a street parking ban for four months of the year. That's my first question. I have two others.
Okay.
So the Commonwealth has changed this definition three times now. But the last definition, which appears to be the final definition, is a subway station, commuter rail station, ferry terminal, or a bus station. So, a subway station is any stop along MBTA, green line, orange line, blue line. And then a bus station is a location serving as a point of embarkation for any bus operated by a transit authority. So that used to be, that counted as a wave stop, but now they've actually called it a stop. So they're saying it's not a wave stop, but a permanent stop, if that's helpful.
Can I, Mr. Moderator, can I elaborate on that? So that means that if, you know, if your house is within half a mile of Cambridge Street and, you know, it's a flag stop, that you, the towns can't require that you have an off-site parking space designated? What it's going to end up meaning is that, you know, property owners are going to have to, you know, either the tenants are going to have to find space elsewhere or, you know, the primary homeowner is going to have to squeeze in their cars. But it's going to have to be kind of figured out between the tenant and the property owner.
My next question, again, through Mr. Moderator to the Planning Director or to Town Council. I think that there is a law that limits the amount of structures on a property. Maybe it's to 25%. And so does that mean an ADU has to factor in what's already there? A barn, a garage, a gazebo, a carriage house, or whatever?
So you can apply the same requirements, the same dimensional requirements, except there is an exception called small lot dimensional standards. This is in the state regulations that your bylaw doesn't change. A protected-use ADU on a lot of not more than 10,000 square feet shall be subject to no more than a five-foot setback in the rear and the side, unless the single-family home applies differently, but shall be exempt from any requirement relative to the floor-area ratio. So if it's a floor-area ratio, the ADU is exempt from it. Otherwise, the dimensional standards apply.
Thank you. And then my last question, just to make sure I heard, that we are not going to allow campers as an ADU. Is that correct?
If the building inspector, or the plumbing inspector, or the electrical inspector cannot inspect it because the interior walls, and they can't pass, meet the state building code, it's not, it cannot be required to be an ADU.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, Precinct 6. You had mentioned that a homeowner or a builder could rent out part as an ADU. Does that, in fact, impact in any way the taxable part of that house? Does it change in any way how the house is actually taxed if they are renting?
I do not know the answer to that. That would be an assessor, the question for the assessor's office. I don't know if they, if there's a...
Our town assessor is here, or assistant assessor officially, I guess, correct? Come on down and render your expertise.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. It would be taxed on how much more square footage was added to the building. Is...
Give it a second.
Okay. So it doesn't affect, in any way, it doesn't make a difference in terms of the dwelling itself? It's still a house lot?
Correct.
In terms of the way it's taxed?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. DeBona, I'm not ignoring you, but you've already spoken once. I'll get to you whenever everybody else is done. Ms. Asher, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kate Asher, Precinct 4. My question is, I was reading with regard to the state law. It says that restrictions cannot be made on whether it can be rented or sold. Do I understand it to mean that it could be separately sold, the ADU? And also, my sub-question there is, is the occupant, so we know as owners, we're in the registry of deeds, right? Is the occupant somewhere in the registry of deeds or in some other public record, especially if it's sold?
So the answer to the second part of your question, no. The owner does not need to reside in either the ADU or the principal dwelling unit. It can be separately owned, and the house and the ADU could be rented out. And then the, I forgot the first part of the question. Is the name of the renter on the public record? No. No. Can the ADU be separately sold? I don't believe, I don't believe so, no.
Anything further, Mr. DeBona? You can have your second chance now.
I just had one, I'm sorry, Jeff DeBona, Precinct 3. I just had one follow-up question to what I had asked before. So if the AG kicks this back because of the issues Ms. Cadillac brought up that were flagged by Town Council, then what happens?
The AG is likely to do one of two things. They'll either eliminate the particular provision that's offensive, and it will be published without that provision. Or if it's a questionable provision that they think may be challenged later down the road but is not offensive, then they usually give a warning to the town that's about six paragraphs long, and it cites a lot of case law, and it says, "Talk to Town Council." So that's what they will do. They will give you a warning that you might get challenged later down the road. But if it is offensive and directly in opposition, then they will strike it.
Okay, not the whole bylaw, just that portion?
Just that provision.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hartling. Sorry to didn't see you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Not sure how you missed me. Chris Hartling, Precinct 3. Just three questions. Was the building inspector given a voice in this process? And did he provide, did he or she provide input? What's the concern with that second egress from a second floor having to be enclosed? And would it count towards the square? And would it count towards the square footage of the allowed space?
So, as far as the building inspector is concerned, we did, I did sit down and have a meeting with all the personnel in the Building Department, and they were on board with all of these things. The thought process behind making sure that stairways are internal was firstly, from a safety perspective, you know, it's decking, and, you know, it's harder to maintain an exterior staircase, especially if it's wood. And so, there's that safety concern. The other concern was aesthetics and wanting it to appear, you know, single-family neighborhoods maintaining that character. So, and as far as the square footage, do you have?
So, they also changed the definition of gross floor area on Friday. And so, the answer is that area would not be included in the gross floor area calculation.
We'll see none. We'll put this to a vote. It's a two-thirds.
No, no, simple majority.
So, no, excuse me, this is just a simple majority. Oh, yeah, housing, simple majority. All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Clearly passes a simple majority test.
Thank you so much.
So, that moves us on to Article 9, which has been withdrawn because the Planning Board has not voted on this issue. And so, this concludes what the Planning Board has to say tonight, and it also concludes probably our last appearance here of Mr. Ernie.
Article 10.
Mr. Ernie Covino, who is finishing up his last term as a member of the Planning Board. He's been on since, I don't know, Dirt was young. Since Dirt was young, isn't it, when you got on the board, Ernie?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, all right. But thank you, Ernie, for all your time and effort. Okay, but before I forget, I'd like to thank the folks helping us tonight. Joanne, Ninzeko Bo, geez, I've been practicing your name here, so Ninzeko Ba, Kai Ja, Cole Waznor, and Benjamin Peters. Thank you, folks, for your help tonight. And I guess we'll move on to financial articles. Okay, Article 11 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant, is to authorize a five-year contract for technology cybersecurity Ways and Means. Mr. Davison.
Ways and Means approved this 13-0-0.
Thank you. Anybody else to Select Board vote on this?
Select Board vote of 5-0 on this.
Thank you. And is someone going to speak on it? Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Denizio, Assistant Town Administrator. The article that you have in front of you tonight is, it's for a multi-year lease, but it's just for the authorization for the town to go for a contract of more than three years. Mass General Law, Chapter 30b, Section 12, as you saw in the memo, requires town meeting approval before the town can enter into a contract with terms of longer than three years. What will happen is our IT folks for the school in the town will continue to work with our vendors to put the plan together, and then they'll get the pricing and the lease terms, and we'll be able to use five years. We'll have that tool in our toolbox. And then, that project or the funding for that project would be approved when we came back here in May as part of the budget process. So, again, this is just the authorization to go longer than three years. Now, this has been done for this exact similar project. This will be the fourth time we're doing it. Your town meeting has approved things like a bus contract and a trash contract to go out for five years. It just helps us spread out those payments and smooth them out. Thank you.
Any questions on this issue? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 12, been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant, is to transfer free cash to the Water Stabilization Fund. Ways and Means Committee. Mr. Davison, please.
Ways and Means approved this 13-0-0. It's an annual article that we see.
Select Board?
Thank you, Ms. Warren. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Denizio, do you get to speak again?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Still John Denizio, still Assistant Town Administrator. This article is something you're used to hearing from us from January. It started before I even started working here. It was a way, as the memo describes, it's a way for the town to capture the additional revenues of a rate increase because they don't exactly match up to the additional costs as we continued with the project of connecting to the MWRA. We're hopeful in a few years we won't have to do this anymore because the project will be completed, and the borrowing will be completed. And at that point, we'll just add revenue line to the, you know, additional revenues to the budget and the additional expenses to the budget, and be done with these transfers. But for now, we've got a couple more times of me talking about it.
Questions on this? Seeing none. Let's vote on it. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Article 13, been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it also is as printed in the warrant, is to transfer from free cash to the Ways and Means Reserve Fund, the amount of $100,000. Mr. Davison, please.
Since this goes into our fund, I'll explain this one. You see, every year in May, we fund this line item at $200,000, and then in January, we add an additional $100,000. And it's basically an emergency fund. It allows us to start a repair or deal with an emergency without calling a special town meeting in order to fund that. At the next town meeting, it gets reported by Ways and Means to the body, what the use was and what our vote was. So, again, it's an annual thing. It's been a long time since we used it. I think the last time was maybe for an HVAC or the electrical service to the commons. So, it's not commonly used. At the end of the year, any unused money goes back into free cash and cycles around again.
0-0.
Select Board?
Give it a second. He'll find you.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. We voted 5-0 in favor of this article.
Thank you. Mr. Denizio?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Mr. Denizio has nothing to add as the microphone was not on, but I heard him clearly. Okay. Any further, any questions on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Passes unanimously, it looks like. Article 14, to authorize transportation infrastructure funds. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Mr. Davison, please.
Ways and Means approved this 13-0-0.
Thank you. Select Board?
Hello? Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The Select Board voted 5-0 in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Denizio, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is another one that's an annual article that you see at January. What is the background on this is the state charges a fee of 20 cents per Lyft or Uber or ride share, and that 20 cents is split by the state and by the town that that ride originated in. So, over the years, we've gotten, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars from this. It's for calendar year. This money that we're appropriating right now is from calendar year 23, 10 cents. We got $34,000. We had 340,000 rides that started here in Burlington. This, what we use this for, we have, that money goes into what's called a receipts reserved account. We can't just spend it. We have to come to town meeting and appropriate it. And there's some rules on what you can appropriate it for. A few years back, the administration and COA worked with the Transportation Committee to get an idea of what would be the best use of this. And at the time, we were starting the Lyft program that's run through the COA. And right now, this is just one of the funding sources that helps that project, which is a smashing success and continues to grow. So, this is, just helps offset the cost of that.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Questions from the body? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 15, Tax Abatement Defense Fund for $250,000. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Oh, no, it's not. Excuse me. Let me read it. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the overlay surplus account the sum of $250,000 to fund legal appraisal and consulting services for property tax challenges. Ways and Means. Mr. Davison, please.
Ways and Means approved this 13-0-0.
Thank you. Select Board? No vote? Anyone speaking on it? Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. From time to time, the assessors have a legal defense fund, which what they use when a taxpayer within the town challenges their tax assessment, and it becomes a court case at the appellate tax board. We haven't updated these funds in several years now, so town meeting usually provides a sum of money, and then the assessors work off of that over a period of years to fund attorneys and appraisal fees for the court cases. So, this is just a replenishment of that fund. I would urge you to support it. Defending our tax values is very important to us, and I think the assessors have done a great job over the years, and the amount of abatements that are given out, and the amount of ATB cases that are lost are really minimal, considering the complexity of the property that we have here in town. So, I would urge your support on this.
Questions from the body? Mr., yes, up there, Jeff? Go ahead. God, I lose the names.
Behind you.
Hi, Jeff DeBona, Precinct 3. So, I am in favor of this. It is good for us to have it. Just a quick question. Is this the fund that's being used to, for the legal abatements that Macy's has been filing?
Go ahead.
Yes, not for the actual abatements themselves, but for the defense of the town's values in the appellate tax, appellate tax board.
That's what I was asking. So, that was all.
Anything further? Okay. Let's put this to a vote, then. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. There's something else I've been remiss in noting, that we have two new town meeting members. I hope they're here tonight. Mr. Schmuckler and Ms. Robinson. Please stand up so we know who you are. Okay. Brings us on to Article 17.
16.
16? Didn't we do 16?
We did not do 16.
I'm rushing the gun again. I guess I want to get out of here. No. You know, we could do that. We could, you know, we set a record in September with three nights. We could do it the same time, you know, here. Just offering. Okay. Article 16, been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Ways and Means. Mr. Davison, please.
So, I am going to speak on this for just a minute also. These are previously approved projects, and this is a use of free cash that we have planned on for some time. The committee thought it important that we just speak for a minute about free cash. It is easily the worst name for a line item in a budget that you could come up with. It's an important component of our budget, and it is a way that the town can kind of smooth out some of our expenses and keep debt off of the books. So, for every $10 million that we do not borrow, we save about $710,000 over the life of those loans. And so, we think it's important. We also try to smooth the growth of our debt service, and we can use free cash in that way. If you remember, in May, we used free cash for purchasing vehicles and refurbishing sewer lift stations and planning, you know, designing sewer lift stations and replacing roofs and some of the paving. And so, we try to kind of pay those things forward and not borrow that money. Knowing that we had some of these projects coming in the future, like the police station, Fox Hill, we allowed the free cash line to grow a bit over the last five years so that we could do what we're doing tonight. So, by paying some of this forward, the analogy that we used in our meeting the other night was just, as a homeowner, when you buy your house, you don't finance 100%. But many towns would finance the police station 100%. This is our way to put down a down payment, to limit the amount of borrowing that we have to do, and to save some money on interest. So, that's our use of free cash. And when you hear the term free cash, if you see it growing, it's not that we have a lot of extra money, it's that there are plans in place to try to use it strategically to prevent having to do bands, which are bond anticipation notes. It's kind of the construction loan, if you will, or the bonds, which are, is a municipal form of a mortgage, if you will. So, how'd that do? Say anything? Is that true?
End of vote. What was their vote?
Vote?
13-0-0.
Thank you. Select Board?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The Board voted 5-0 in favor of this.
Thank you. And Mr. Denizio, you're speaking on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple things to add to what Mr. Davison talked about, just to say why these projects and why these amounts. So, like Mr. Davison pointed out, we had carried over, or had, we had built up a significant amount of free cash for, in anticipation of this, and the administration and the finance folks feel like we're still, even if all of this is approved, we're still carrying over a healthy balance into May to do what we ordinarily would do, and still try to fund our pay-as-you-go capital project and potentially, you know, keep anything else off the debt schedule. So, this isn't going to handcuff us on what. For these, why these four projects, they were approved in this past year, either at May Town Meeting or at September Town Meeting. And why the amounts is because two of them are the total that we would have to borrow in the project. And then the two for the building projects is what we would have to short-term borrow this April, and Mr. Genino goes out for our next borrowing, we would have to borrow some money for those projects because they've started and we've started spending money, and we have to close the year. We can't close the year with a deficit. So, that's where the amounts came from. That's where the projects came from. And just to, just point out one thing on the savings, that is $71,000 for every, that's annually for every million we borrow. So, at 10 million, that's $710,000 annually, and over the life of that project, that's between $6 and $7.7 million. So, spending this money now is saving us a significant amount of money over the next 20, 25 years. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from the body? Yes, Monty. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. I believe this is the time in the meeting that's appropriate for me to ask about the capital budget. If you remember, in September, we had discussion of a bylaw proposal that I had put together. And at that time, there was a discussion that the capital budget was being put together and that town meeting was going to get some kind of presentation or outline of what the capital budget is going to look like at this meeting. And so, I'm wondering if there is anything like that.
Mr. D'Nizio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Now, that is something that would typically happen at May. Our capital requests aren't even all compiled yet. If you're asking what it's going to look like, it's probably going to look like what it has the past few years on ordinary projects, but it's too early for us to be presenting on that. But that's something you would expect we do in May, including something with the operating budget. The capital budget goes in with that.
Is there going to be some kind of presentation about that capital budget in May? Traditionally, there isn't a presentation about the 10-year capital budget.
Your call.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would respectfully disagree about the presentation. It's done with the budget book and during the budget process, but we can discuss, we have had discussions with Ways and Means about being more involved in the capital project or having more of a role, playing more of a role with capital. Planning Committee has been on those discussions. I can't tell you yet what May is going to look like. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Monty.
Now, there was a bylaw amendment requiring a report on the capital budget and a presentation and that kind of things, and we were told that, yes, there was going to be more cooperation, and yes, there was going to be presentation and things like that. So, I'm hoping that you folks haven't forgotten what we talked about last September. Thank you.
Anything further on this article? Mr. Rutherford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just for my own education, are we bringing these back for a revote because the town meeting has to approve using them for free cash, even though we already approved, like, spending the money?
Mr. D'Nizio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes. If we're going to use free cash, it has to be appropriated by town meeting. When these were originally approved, they were authorized to borrow the money.
Anything else? All right. All those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moves us on to Article 17. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. It is to rescind the prohibition on marijuana establishments. At this point, I would like to recognize Will Seagard to make a presentation on this article. Mr. Seagard? The floor is yours.
Right.
Port of information, yes?
Do we get the votes for a presentation?
You'll get a vote after the presentation. I'm asking for the presentation first. I want everyone on the same page when we get to a vote.
How do I get this on the screen?
There you go. So, you're just going to get it up there. I'll get it up.
Okay. Thank you. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Will Seagard. I am a resident of Burlington. I've lived here for about five years. I've lived in the area since 2011. I went to Bentley University. Just to give you a little bit of background on myself, I am in the cannabis industry. I own a facility. And so, in the course of my daily life, friends, neighbors, other people would ask me, why don't we have these facilities in Burlington? And so, I began this process by going to the planning board and asking that exact question. That was before I knew about town meeting or how things really worked here. But I thought it was still something that should be discussed, at the very least, and I hope by the end of this, you realize why I think it's important that we have this So, initially, the plan was to provide zoning on this in conjunction, so this could all be discussed at once. But we've since sort of slowed that process, just so there could be more input given by planning board, select board, and the other town departments. And really, that's just in order to take the proper time and attention that this needs in order for this to really have a thorough look-through and make sure that it's done in a way that best serves the town's needs and not just mine as the business owner or whoever else would be applying for these permits. And so, really, right now, we're just discussing rescinding this general bylaw amendment, and that doesn't include where these will go, what the operating parameters will be. All this does is, again, give the mandate to planning, the select board, and all of the other departments to look at all of the towns around us and all over the state who are already doing this and taking the best parts of what they're doing and adapting it to Burlington's wants and needs. And so, I think it's important just to acknowledge the vote that happened in 2016. And I apologize, my formatting obviously got a little bit messed up here, but anyway. The vote in 2016 was, should adult marijuana use be legalized? And so, I think it's important to take a step back and, again, just acknowledge where we're at, which is that that vote passed. And it doesn't matter that Burlington didn't agree with that necessarily. Every single town in Massachusetts has legal marijuana. And so, by acknowledging that and accepting that, I think we can then move forward and acknowledging the fact that if you're over 21, you can use it, you can possess it, you can grow it in your backyard if you so chose. And the only things that the no vote allowed, essentially, was that we could ban these establishments from our town, which is ultimately what happened. But we couldn't ban the possession, again, the use, home cultivation, or medical facilities. And so, by, I want to just, I guess, look overall at what has happened since legalization in 2018. I'm sorry if you can't read that, but it says that there have been over $7 billion in legal sales since 2018, and over $1.6 billion collected in taxes. The important part is in bold, which is that in the three years from 2021 to 2023, local towns and cities collected almost $181 million that went directly to them. And so, that's the financial benefit that our town is just completely missing out on. And there are a lot of other benefits as well. I don't want to just focus on the financial. Those being lower teen usage rates, which have happened since legalization. This is numbers from a CDC study that have shown that in the 10 years from 2013 to 2023, teen usage actually trended downwards. So, what happened during that same time period? Legalization happened. That led to further restrictions on who could purchase this and who could sell it, and I think the data pretty clearly shows that that had an effect. Now, I just want to acknowledge that maybe, long-term, things will go back up a little bit, but what we did not see was a huge uptick, which I think is what people typically assume would have happened, once it's more prevalent in our community. And so, I just want to acknowledge that and be realistic about where we are and where, hopefully, we're going. So, there are some other added benefits, and those are particularly around safety, and those are lower crime. So, dispensaries, and this is a study done by the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia, it shows that there was roughly a 19% decline in crime directly near dispensaries. Again, I think this is another thing that people typically assume. If there's a dispensary, that might be a gathering place for, you know, undesirables or whoever, but that's clearly not the case from the data. And on top of that, it provides safer products for consumers, a safer place for transactions to be conducted, and also prevents transactions from happening for anybody who's not of age. So, again, I think there's a lot of benefits that we, as a town, are potentially missing out on. And I just want to be realistic about who uses cannabis, and that's people in Burlington, people who live in Burlington, a lot of them. 21% of adults over 21 in Massachusetts use it every single month, and that's direct data from a DPH study. 30% of adults in Massachusetts have used it in the last year. That's three times the number of people who use cigarettes. So, again, I just want to be realistic about where we are. I think the data pretty clearly shows that this is in our community, whether or not we banned it. And what we have to do now is choose how best to move forward and what's the safest way for us to do that. And not to belabor this point, but I just also want to acknowledge where dispensaries are in the state. The closest dispensaries to us are four miles from where we are right now, in Woburn. There's one in Billerica, eight miles away. 70% of the 351 towns in this state have dispensaries or allow them. So, again, this is here. It's prevalent. It's available. The only thing that we're not doing in Burlington, I believe, is controlling it, regulating it, and taxing it. And so, these are all of the other nearby cities and towns who have begun to do that, or not all of them, obviously, that's not the 250, but a few that are directly near us, like Arlington, like Watertown, like Cambridge, and Belmont. And I think that we should learn from their example and learn from what they've done and take, again, the best parts of those so that we can benefit as a town. The monetary benefits to us could be pretty large. I think these numbers should hopefully speak for themselves, but Billerica, last year, did close to $400,000 in additional tax revenue. This is just associated with the taxation of marijuana. It's not including your property taxes or any other taxes that you would otherwise collect from any other business. And so, these are averages just of a few towns directly around us. I think that it's important, again, to just acknowledge that the people are here, they're using cannabis, and we should really take a step back and try and figure out how best to capitalize on that and how we can benefit from it. We have 54 bars and restaurants or more that are serving alcohol. We have six package stores. We have 8 million visitors to the mall every single year. That's just the mall. That's not including any of the other retail businesses around. We also have a daily population of 100,000-plus people. So, I think there's a big opportunity here. These people are already driving on our roads. They're already using our infrastructure. They're already causing traffic. If we can get more money from them, I think that's a good thing. So, in a lot of ways, this is similar to alcohol, and these are very similar to package stores. They're just regulated a lot more strictly and with a lot more controls. You can't go into these facilities, even if you're an Amazon delivery person and you want to drop off a package, you cannot get in the front door if you do not have a 21 or older ID. So, and this is all under the scrutiny of the police, the state, other local departments, and this wouldn't just happen overnight. This would happen after a very long special permitting process and a state licensure In addition to that, there's a yearly recertification that is unlike any other business that's in the state, to my knowledge. So, every single year, a business has to go back to the select board, finalize an agreement with them. If there's any additional unforeseen things that have come up or we want to add as the town, we can do that. And then, going forward, those all need to be complied with. So, again, this is extremely regulated. It's similar to other businesses that we already have, except there could be a huge financial benefit and also safety benefit to us. And the financial benefit being 3% of the gross sales, which would go directly to the town. That's net of all costs. So, if there's additional traffic details that are needed or anything else, that is billed directly to these businesses, and that is not coming out of the 3% that goes to the town. So, I think, in summation, this is what I believe this could potentially provide for Burlington, and that's safety and funding. Safety, because it provides tested products, controlled sales, and town oversight. And funding from that 3% in addition to the other community impact fees that we could assess on these businesses, such as youth education programs, DUI trainings, or other things that, again, this is already in our community, so even if we're not going to allow this, it's something we should be looking at and probably doing anyway. But if somebody else can pay for it, I think that's the best of both worlds. In addition, that 3% could then go to our capital projects, the things that we need and the things that make Burlington a great place to live. So, this is a summary of what the process would be like. At the very top there is highlighted just what we're discussing now. Then, there would be the whole zoning component, the host community agreement, special permitting process, and in addition to all the state licensure and constr- process, and in addition to all the state licensure and construction and everything else that needs to happen. So this won't happen overnight. It won't happen if we pass something tonight, this isn't going to pop up tomorrow. There's still many, many opportunities for the town to give input and ultimately exercise their control over this. And I hope that if we don't take anything else away from my presentation tonight, we understand that I'm just trying to get the point across that we're in need of regulation for this. We need to control it, we need to tax it like we do with pretty much everything else. And so, again, just to summarize, nine years later, the question isn't should it be legal? It's should we regulate and tax it? So with that, I'll end my presentation and... There we go, Bill.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Seaguard. Select Board, did you take a vote on this article? On actually the article?
Give it a minute. It's ready. Yes, we did. We took a vote on this. It was 3-1-1. Three of us were in favor, one abstention and one against. So for transparency, I'm going to let them speak on why they did what they did. And Michael, you can start.
Through the moderator.
Mr. Speo.
Mike Aspejo, Select Board. I voted in favor of lifting the moratorium on cannabis sales in town. Personally, I passed on grass, but if you're going to vote against selling marijuana in town, it's because you don't want it here. You don't want it in our town, we don't need it here, that's what I hear, but it's here. And there's no stopping it. There are people using it all the time, every day, and they're getting it right across our borders. They're getting it in Woburn, they're getting it in Billerica, and we're not keeping it out. And I'm so very concerned with the outlook for the town, with the taxes and our vacancy rate, that's the highest it's ever been, the capital projects we want to do, and I really, really want to see a new high school. So this, we might as well reap the tax benefit of something that's already here. It's been a long time since that vote in 2016. I believe that, I feel from the people I've talked to, that attitudes have changed about marijuana. And this is a safe, regular way, regulated way to get it to our residents, and we would reap the tax benefit if we sold it here. And Mr. Tigges will support, speak about his vote against.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Jim Tigges, Select Board. I have a very unique perspective on this. 37 years in law enforcement. In 37 years, I've yet to see marijuana in a positive light. In fact, I've investigated Viennese burglaries where the target was marijuana. We've had robberies where the intended reward, so to speak, was the marijuana. I investigated a shooting in the Burlington Mall parking lot, which was a marijuana drug rap. It was exchange for marijuana, people from out of town came. One person got shot four times, he survived. It was marijuana. Another case we had that I was not involved with, it was we had an armed home invasion where the intended target was marijuana. I have a hard time giving my sign of, my seal of approval on this, maybe because I'm a little jaded because of all those incidents, 37 years in law enforcement. That's one part of my argument against it. As stated in the presentation, a 3% community impact fee. Think about that. They're already acknowledging your community is going to be impacted. And that 3% community impact fee, that money can only be spent on something that is considered reasonably related because of the dispensary. Using Mr. Seaguard's own statistics, 21% of residents use it, that means 79% don't. I was going to give a list of other robberies that I'm aware of, that have occurred because of marijuana, or specifically dispensaries. There was one in Swansea last year for $136,000, May of last year. Just Google it, just Google it, and you'll just see an ongoing list. I'll pretty much end it on that because I know everybody wants to speak on this, or some people want to speak on this. But Mike, thank you for that poem you passed on grass. We talk about this tax impact, getting the money. We just passed a zoning article the other night that is going to bring in a lot more money than we have. We're getting money because of zoning. I'd rather get money through zoning and not stoning.
Haven't we heard enough from the Select Board, Billy? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was the one abstention vote for this, and I feel like I need to explain that a little bit. So my reasoning for that has to do with a vote that, an additional vote that we took that night, which was 3-2 in favor of putting this issue on the ballot in April. So my feelings around this have to do with sort of the unique nature around this issue and the history of it with our town in particular. So in 2017, the town meeting put this prohibition measure in place because, as a direct result of the townwide vote in 2016 against it. So now this issue is coming in front of you again without a townwide vote. I don't know what you all are hearing from your constituents, but I'm hearing very mixed messages. My email box is full of people who are very strongly and passionately against it, yet when I talk to people in the community, I'm talking to people who are either for it or kind of don't really care either way. And so it's very hard to gauge the temperature of the town from my perspective, and therefore I find it difficult to put my support or my opposition to it. So that is the reason for my abstention and just wanted you all to know. I know the timing of it, and a vote in April is not ideal, considering you're talking about it tonight, and would have ideally been on the November ballot last year. There's just no time to get it on there or sense of urgency around it. So that's what we have in front of us. It's a data point, it will be a non-binding referendum, just to kind of take the temperature of the town. So that is coming up in April, and that was the reason for my abstention. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Now, we've heard from three, do the other two need to speak also? I would like to remind the Select Board that I prefer to have the Board speak through its chair on both ends, not have four or five people speak, thank you, as are required every other Board. Okay, is there any other Board that voted on this?
General bylaw.
General bylaw. Can we get a...
Thank you. Phyllis Newfeld, Vice Chair, GBRC. We voted 5-0-0, no opinion.
Wait a minute. That's your job. You abdicated your job. Thank you. Now, do we have questions, comments from the body?
Joanne Fristacci, Precinct 3 Town Meeting. Listening to Sarah's comments in deference to our resident population, I make a motion to postpone this warrant article until after April.
You know, I may be speaking a little out of turn here, but this is town meeting's responsibility to deal with this. You can postpone it, but you are stepping aside from what is an article that is in front of you. Mr. Monaco.
Let me ask my point of information, please, and it really will be informational. There is no cooling off period if we simply defeat this tonight. They can bring it back in May. I believe I'm correct.
That's correct.
So there's really no point in postponing it. If you're not for it, vote against it, it'll get voted down. I'm assuming informationally that the referendum is a done deal. You will go out, you've already voted to do that in... Right. So you know what you're going to get. If you don't like this, vote no, it can come back in May.
Ms. Fristacci, go ahead.
Point of information, if there was a second to this, are we supposed to vote on it?
On what?
On a motion to postpone.
I haven't heard a second, no. All right.
Okay.
All right, it's an article in favor of us, in front of us to postpone. Any comments on postponing?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Rutfield, Precinct 5. So I helped Will actually submit this to the warrant. One concern with putting off till May is that we're going to be dealing with the budget as well, so we figure try and get some of the controversies out of the way now, because the May meeting is probably going to run long for other reasons as well. We don't need to add more fuel to that fire, but it's also understandable if you want a little more time for more data points as well.
Online? We have a question from online from... David Miller?
Yeah, I had a question on the original article, not on the postponement.
Well, we're talking about postponing at the moment, David.
All right, so I don't have a question about that.
Okay. Any comments on postponement? Any discussion? Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sherry Ellis, Precinct 3. With no vote from the General Bylaw Review Committee, mixed message from the Select Board as far as getting more opinions, but then voting in favor of it, and no zoning to go with this. So if we do approve this, we still don't have it because it's not able to go anywhere without the zoning. So regardless of we vote this tonight or not, we're coming back in either May or September to vote for zoning if this is passed tonight. And so with all of that, I really cannot vote for something that we're only voting half of. And with regard to the town, Mr. Monaco's comments about getting the town's opinions, if we go ahead and say, yes, this is a great idea, and then we get a non-binding referendum that says 80% of the people don't want it, we won't look very good. So I urge you to postpone this and get the full picture. Thank you.
Is that Mimi back there? Ms. Bix Island, please.
Yes. Mimi Bix Island, Precinct 1. I have two questions. There is some confusion among town meeting members about whether the April, in April, irrespective of what happens here tonight, will this be on the ballot in April? And will it be framed as whether the town supports rescinding the prohibition? Is that how the question is going to be framed? Irrespective of what happens here? Okay, maybe you could answer that, and then I'll ask my second question.
Ms. Segurino, please.
Yes, Town Council helped us with the question, and it reads, I don't, I don't know if it says should or shall, but it says, should the town vote to rescind the prohibition on marijuana establishments as written in general bylaw?
Yes, I have. Did we read it? Yeah.
Town Council, please.
The question is, shall the town consider, because it's non-binding, consider repealing the prohibition on marijuana establishments as set forth in Article 13, Section 1.42 of the Burlington Town Bylaws? Please note this question is non-binding.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make one comment to that. If we did vote on this tonight, that news about that would get out to the community, and it could be an influencing factor. So depending on how strongly you feel about this one way or the other, there is that piece to consider. Sarah Colley said, we don't have a pulse on how the community feels right now. So I'm not weighing in one way or another, I just want to point these things out. My other question was this. It was said by a Select Board member that the 3% gross tax collected on every sale cannot be used, or has to be used by the town for related business or something. Could we get some clarification about that?
Well, does it apply, does it, is it a res, does it apply to postponing the article or not?
It influences my decision because this proponent's primary selling argument is that the town will financially benefit and that it's not... So thank you.
Ms. Segurino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So what Will was referring to is an excise tax, and that 3% is general fund revenue that could be used for any town purpose. I believe what Select Board Member Tigges was referring to, the town would also have the opportunity to negotiate community impact fees, which would be collected from the vendor and then used for specific programs that are believed to be impacts from having the establishment in town.
Mr. Campbell.
Chris Campbell, Precinct 1. My total respect for Robert's rules. I think it's early in the process here, it'd be nice to hear what town meeting has to say. We have a town meeting member and a resident who did the proper process to get this on town meeting warrant for us to decide, and that is what our purpose here. Yes, it is great to hear from the voters, but what we have in front of us is two people who follow the democratic process, for us as town meeting members, to weigh in on this one way or another.
Mr. Sinessi, then we'll get to Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. I honestly have no strong feelings one way or the other if this goes through and passes, but as much as I respect the Select Board wanting to take the temperature of the community, it really is our responsibility in this room to lead. So I think we need to proceed forward and take a vote tonight. I actually think to allow this to go to a townwide referendum, it's really us shirking responsibility and actually allowing some of our rights to lead to a road. It's contrary to what this body does. We need to protect our flanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hughes.
Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7. I believe that our job here is to represent the people in our precincts, period, not to represent ourselves. And I think that going to, our people in our precincts, at least the people I've got many letters from, have voted, maybe it was a few years ago, but they voted, and they would like a voice again to vote on this issue. For us to vote on this issue right now is premature without understanding how our constituents feel about it. We should postpone. That's our job. Let's be, let's not be premature. Let's not send the message to the people that we represent that their voice is not important. So I encourage you to postpone, period. I have more later.
Ms. Asher. Then we'll get to Mr. Duttucci, and then up to Mr. DeBona.
Yeah, just adding something new here. So what I heard the presenter also say, in addition to the monetary aspect, is our kids. And to me, that's huge. The data was up there, it's better for our kids. I actually came into this not wanting to vote for this, but now you've changed my mind. And I think that we should take the data into account. And again, this is just beginning the process. When it comes to the safety of our kids, why postpone that?
Mr. Duttucci. Over here, please.
Dan Duttucci, Precinct 6. Maybe this is a question for legal, because I'm not really sure whether or not we should wait for the vote in April and then have the town meeting vote on it in September or vice versa. So on the state level, there was a question on... So, on the state level, there was a question on, a ballot question, correct? The state, there was a ballot question that allowed municipalities to have marijuana sales.
In 2017, the state voted to allow recreational marijuana sales.
Right. So, besides the legislative body voting on it, was there a vote, a referendum vote by the people? Was it a ballot question? Or was it, because we have a legislator here, so I wanna know who voted on it first?
The legislation allowed the town, if the town voted against legalization for the state, that they could then ban retail sales in their town. But that would have to come to the legislative body of the town to do that. And town meeting back in 2017 or 2018, whenever it was, voted to go along with the town vote.
Okay, so it's, so, okay, so basically, the state is just saying, you can do what you wanna do?
Correct.
And so, let's do what we wanna do, that's all.
Up at the back for Mr. DeBona.
Thank you. Rich DeBona, Precinct 3. Motion to move the question.
This requires a 2/3s vote to move the question on whether we should postpone or not. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. All those opposed? That's, looks like a 2/3s. So, we've now moved the question, brings us on to the vote of whether we should postpone or not. All those in favor of postponing? All those opposed? The motion fails. Let's move on. Further discussion on this article. Mr. Kelly. We just did that. You're out of order. Oh, the main motion, all right. Sorry. You know, you get confused up here.
I'm moving the question on the main motion, not on the motion to postpone.
Got it, you know? Is there a second on that?
I don't wanna come back Monday. I wanna finish the warrant.
Okay. We now have a motion to move the question on the main article. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion fails. Let's move on. People with things to say about the article, we'll start at the front and walk our way back. Mr. Monaco, then we'll go to Mr. Hardy.
Hello, hello. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the most fun I've had in a town meeting in a long time, including the jokes. They're pretty, pretty good over there. So, notwithstanding my informational dissertation on postponing or not, we are where we are now, and I'm fine with that. So, I have two questions, really to the selectmen. I understand the positive side of, it's here, and there's a lot of revenue, so let's move on with it and get with the program. The money does not influence me at all, at all. The question is, is it a functional and societal thing that we want to bring in to our four walls, like many other around us have? And that's what I would be voting on. To Mr. Tig's point, aside from the best joke I've heard in a long time, things change, and law enforcement around this is probably going to have to grow. And so, I'm not so sure that your historical experience completely weighs into what's gonna go wrong here. I just don't, I don't think it's that clear before and today. So, I'm not as concerned about what could go wrong, but I'm sure plenty will. But I'm sure plenty goes wrong around liquor, still. I mean, we have drunk driving arrests all the time, I'm pretty sure. So, and I'm not one of them, by the way, yet. So, that doesn't really push me that much either. However, I am troubled by the fact that the residents haven't weighed in one more time. And so, I agree town meeting needs to do its job, we do. And we could vote on this tonight. But I really think we should avoid being in the pickle of voting in favor of it, and then in, what, three or four months, we find out that the residents haven't changed their mind, and 80% of them don't want it. Now, what we're stuck with is we've enabled it so we could move on to the zoning, and what do we do? Just let it sit there unzoned? So, I would tend to, at this stage of the game, you'd have to vote it down just because you wanna hear from the residents. Or you can vote it down because you don't want it. The only reason to vote in favor of this is, you just wanna make the decision now that we need it, we should do it now, and we don't need to hear from anybody else. And I'm really not in that camp. I would rather hear one more time, and then go forward. I think it's inevitable that something along these lines is gonna happen. I think the regulatory stuff that's around it is maturing, it's getting better, law enforcement will get better, and eventually, it really is going to be part of our culture. I'm not sure that the town's ready for it, and the only way I can figure that out is to let them vote again on the referendum. So, I would vote this down just to get to the referendum. Thank you.
Mr. Hardy, I believe you had your hand up? Then we'll get Ms. Nash.
So, Mike Hardy, Precinct 1. I, you know, it's the same thing, the same question Frank had. And just to clarify, if it's a non-binding resolution when we vote as a town in April, if that's voted down, it depends on what we do tonight if we wanna bring it back. If it's voted in favor, then, like Frank said, it kinda puts us in a pickle if we voted it down. So, it's a, it's a kind of a weird situation. But I, I'm kinda leaning towards what Frank said, maybe we vote it down here and say we wanna understand how the town feels.
Ms. Nash.
Thank you. Mildred Nash, Precinct 3. I am concurring with the two previous speakers, but for a reason which I think is more compelling than I've heard anybody else make. We have local elections where the average turnout is about 15%. This is kind of disgraceful for us to make the vote here, as Mrs. Hughes said, when the residents voted against it back in 2017, and then it comes back to us. I frankly have gotten calls only from people who are against it. I haven't the slightest interest in marijuana in any shape or form. I would be more willing to listen to a discussion after a vote of the town that maybe had 60% come out, like they did with the Community Preservation Act, and see what they said. And then I would feel we were representing the town more fully. So, I hope that we will vote no tonight, so that we leave it, first of all, in the hands of the residents, and then we either back them up or take our life in our hands and say, we don't care what you think, we'll vote it our way. So, please vote no. Thank you.
We'll keep working up the aisle. Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. I come at this from a very different angle from, I think, probably just about anybody in the room. First of all, I wanna say, we don't need to have any particular retail store in Burlington. But, what we are talking about is allowing a retail, a legal retail establishment. We do have six liquor stores here. You don't have to be a drinker to decide that it's okay for somebody to have a business selling alcohol at a liquor store in town. So, my particular background, I just wanna say that I remember the 60s, I remember the 70s. What's different about me was that I was absolutely straight, but I was in a family where my parents and my siblings both used marijuana. And my siblings got started because they took it from my parents, the same as their cigarettes. That's how they got started with that. How many people in this room, the first cigarette you smoked came from a family member? Or the first drink you had came from a friend or somebody's sibling who bought it for you? There are, at any rate, there are a lot of situations going on in town, and what you need to realize is that it's naive to think that marijuana isn't here in our town, that it's not being used. But there is a tremendous stigma to be able to stand up and acknowledge that someone is using it. So, I started doing some research and experimentation after it became legal, so waited till the age of 65. And about six months ago, after deciding that there were some issues with it, I literally took the rest of my chocolate. I've never smoked it, but I made special chocolate. I threw it in the trash can, it went to the incinerator. So, up in smoke, at any rate. I'm looking at this as to whether or not someone can open a legal business in the town. And if we can use some of the money to be able to do better education, such as lock up your cigarettes, lock up your guns, lock up your gummies, and lock up your prescription medications, because the teenagers and your grandkids, they're sneaking it out of the cabinets. So, what I would like to see is for the body to have good, real information in making a decision. I'm unusual in that I was out looking for CBD flower, and that is hard to find at the retail establishments. So, I've been to about five different towns at different times of the day. I know that you have to show us an ID to get in the first door, and you have to show it again to get in the second door. There are no kids hanging around that I saw, ever. The security there is amazing. The stores that I thought were best were freestanding, there was nothing around them, there was no traffic, there were cameras there. If you go to Woburn or you go to Bill Ricker, just drive up to the parking lot and look outside the building. And I'm gonna be happy to go with you, so I'll volunteer. Contact me by email. I will share personal information with you. I will share the link to the NOVA program on cannabis, where they had both good information and some promising information about what might happen. And I can't tell you how much misinformation and weed mythology is out there. That's not good. I can send you links to peer-reviewed medical articles. But, the marijuana's here in town. What we're really talking about is a retail establishment that is well-controlled and well-regulated, and that is going to have to go through hoops that other retail businesses don't have to go through. So, I volunteer, you can call me up, you can talk to me about this. And I'm not proposing that anybody become a user, but it's here in our community, don't think it's not. We're talking about a retail establishment, so thank you very much.
We'll keep working our way back with Mr. Jeremy Harrington.
Jeremy Harrington, Precinct 2. I think a lot of great things have been said. I think that the security is very important. If you've ever been to a facility, it's incredibly secure, and something that I noticed is, I can take my kids, run errands, go into a liquor store with them, purchase candy and liquor and leave. I cannot get them into one of these facilities, so I know there's concern about that. That's not something that can happen in these. Additionally, the tax revenue's nice, but this is something that, when initially voted on, it was voted against with a lot of the wording being around, we've gotta see how this plays out in the state, right? It has been seven, eight years, it's, we've seen it play out. It's functioning, it's secure, it's safe. And furthermore, you know, we wanna see the town vote on it, but if 15% of the eligible voters are gonna show up to vote, that's not a good sample size. We can't assume that 60% is gonna show up like there was for land use. So, I think we should pass this, I think we should still see what the population says. Hopefully, this sparks interest and we get more than 15%, and then we can reapply it, if we have to, I'm sure. If the town votes against it, and if they vote for it, then we can go ahead with zoning.
Ms. Law.
Sharon Laurie, Precinct 3. So, this is crazy. I have four kids, all of my kids smoke pot. Now, they can't smoke it in my house, but they all smoke pot. My daughter got sick at one point, bad car accident, she made the mistake of taking me to the pot store with her. So, I got my education. So, it is true, there's several layers of security before you can get in there. I'm a senior citizen, and I was, they carded me. So, anyone that goes in there needs to be carded. You look at, so my kids are 20-something, 30-something, 40-something, grandkid is 20-something, okay? He smokes pot too, which is crazy. But my point to you is, pot is here, it is not going anywhere. Things that happened eight, nine, 10 years ago, it happened. It is well-regulated. I can't even believe I'm even saying this stuff. But, I think people talk about, we have the high school coming up, and that's like a little hot button for me right now, because it's gonna cost over $1,000 a year in your taxes. So, how do we help Burlington get tax revenue that's safe? The pot industry is safe in the sense that it is monitored closely. And if it's monitored closely, the police have to be around, so good, so we get more police. They're paying for that. The owners of the pot stores, they're gonna be paying for all of that stuff. So, I don't think that's as big as the concern. There's gonna be something happening in May, so whatever happens in May, we made a decision today to move it forward, to get it properly zoned, to make sure that this body makes sure there's established rules and regulation that we're gonna request for anyone that chooses to open up a pot store. So, my quest to you guys is, you don't need any more time. You don't need any more time. And, believe me, I, I'm a fruity drinker and a glass of wine. I will have nothing to do with going into one of these stores. But, the truth of the matter is, there's a nice source of revenue, there's a lot of vacant spaces that this could go, and they need a lot of space, because there are several layers you have to go to to even get inside the place where you're going to buy it. And then, I believe, when you're cultivating it, if they have stuff in their premises, it's going to be more space. So, I know Oracle, my goodness, Oracle, I think 2/3 of their space is going to be up for a lease or sale, and there's a lot of empty spaces, as we know now. So, I think we should move this forward, make sure we regulate it properly. And it's expensive to do to begin with, so it's not like anyone can pull this. This is a really big deal with lots of insight from many different agencies. Thank you.
We'll go up the other aisle now. Mr. Pearson. So, have other people had hands up too? I'll get to him. He has to wait just like everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. I would like to say that I think that this is one of those cultural, social issues that requires a lot of discussion and a lot of people listening and hearing new information. And so, I think that, unlike the folks that talked before, I think it would be good if this body took a vote on this issue tonight, because it would help... this body took a vote on this issue tonight, because it would help facilitate a conversation in the community before the vote in April. Because if town meeting votes that this or that is how we feel about something, people take notice of that. We are leaders in the community. And I think that it's helpful for us to take, have an opinion and people to say, well, town meeting voted by a very close vote, or town meeting voted by not very much, or all of that. And then people say, why did they do that? And there's a discussion of that, or what kind of things were talked about? And that kind of, that will educate the community about this vote in a way that I think would be very positive. So I think that it's a good idea for us to go ahead and vote tonight and let people know what town, where town meeting is at on this issue. So I think that it's, you know, it'll facilitate the democratic process rather than inhibiting it. And if we vote for it or against it, and the vote in, in April goes the other way, I don't think that people are going to be mad at us. I think that people are going to appreciate that we participated in a, in a community process. And so I, I hope that you go ahead and, I hope you support this, but I think that it's positive that we're going to vote on it.
Mr. Campbell.
Chris Campbell, Precinct 1. Pleased to hear the conversation about us maybe putting things more on the November ballot than the April ballot to get more input, but I digress. This is solely, surely, an economic issue, not political. We're not deciding whether it's legal or not. We're deciding revenue stream. This also has been something that we've recently debated here in town when it came to the cigar shop going into place. And the same arguments happened both at the planning board and at our subsequent other meetings, and they also have not come to fruition. We either want to be smart, pro-smart business, pro-smart legal businesses that will add to our community, or not. And when we're facing the taxes that we're facing and all of these concerns, saying no to another positive revenue stream in town does not seem like the smartest idea. Thank you.
Ms. Hantoon.
Thank you. Michelle Hantoon, Precinct 1. I think Mr. Campbell actually said that very well. I am in support of this article for several reasons, but I just want to point out a couple things to the body, which is, for those of you who feel uncomfortable voting on this without taking the pulse of the other residents in town, you don't get to take their pulse for anything else we voted on. Did you take their pulse for the ADU article? No. Saying, saying that you need to wait and see what 15% of the voters come out and say because you're not comfortable representing your community and your constituency and you haven't talked to them, it seems like that's something that, that people need to deal with on their own individually, with their own precincts and neighborhoods. I think that the economic versus political aspect of this is very important as well. This is an economic issue. We don't have discussions like this about liquor stores or any other types of businesses. And if you are coming at it from a moral standpoint, because you personally are against it, I'm going to tell you right now, voting against this, you're not saving anyone. You're not stopping anyone from using marijuana, or buying marijuana, or selling marijuana. You're just saying that you don't think they should be able to buy it in our town. That's, that's all I have to say.
Online here, Mr. Miller.
Yes, Dave Miller, Precinct 4. I know I've told this story before, but when I was going through chemotherapy, my son, who was going to the high school at the time, told me, Dad, if you need marijuana to help you feel better, just let me know. I can easily get it for you at the high school. So whether you're for or against this article, don't think you're keeping out marijuana out of Burlington. That's all I want to say.
Mr. Sacks. And we'll come over here.
John Sacks, Precinct 7. I actually told a few people I wasn't going to, I was going to abstain on this because I don't have children. And I think, I know for people with children, it's a greater concern. But I wanted to mention a couple things. I have a family member who got extremely attached to marijuana and basically didn't get out of bed for years. I mean, his life completely stopped. But let me just say something. He's 40. And that started when marijuana was illegal. Okay? That started long before it was legal. You could always get it. Another thing I want to point out is that, Jim, I, I hear you with regard to the violence that took place with marijuana. Was that when it was legal or before it was legal?
Both.
Both, all right. Let me say something else. So I have a family member that I mourn for because his life went down a road with marijuana. How many people in here know somebody who has gone down a very sorry road with alcohol? I would suggest that 10% of America are alcoholics, and therefore 10% of Burlington are probably alcoholics. That's 2,000 people. Jim, have you had more arrests of violence, driving, domestic abuse with weed or with alcohol? I think we know the answer. I have a friend that works at Fenway, and he tells me that the fights that go on in the bleachers, it's all alcohol. The guys that are stoned are just staring out in space. But alcohol does make you violent, and the country tried successfully getting rid of And the result of that was such lawlessness that they had to bring it back. And so we live with 10% of the country as alcoholics. We live with it. It's terrible. And I'm, and you could say, well then, why add marijuana to that? Which is a reasonable question. But the fact is, as has been said by Will and other people, they're getting it anyway. You know, there's a billboard in Somerville that says, you know, I don't know, there's like, whatever weed expressed, and they bring it to your house. I, I came to Boston area in 67. I'm pretty sure that billboard wasn't there back then. But the point is, people can get it. They're going to get it. They're going to abuse it. They're going to go down a rat hole with it, just like they do with alcohol. And I wish it wasn't so. But as people said, what the guy wants to do is legal. It's legal. And all we're doing is just making people drive a little bit further to get the same stuff that they're going to get here. So I'm not thrilled about it, but I'm going to vote for it.
Gentleman right here. Right here. Gentleman right here in the striped shirt.
Hi, TJ Flynn, Precinct 2. I'll say personally, if this is approved, I will never set foot in the store, but I do like increased revenue for the, the town. But I do just want to point out, as part of your presentation, sir, you had those statistics on usage going down. You also had statistics there of drinking going down among teens. So I'll just point out that that is correlation. It is not causation. If you're back here again for other articles, for other zoning, for anything else in the future, I would just ask that you spend a little more time on that. You know, if you have a study that actually shows some, some causation, please do that. But I don't want anybody to be influenced by those stats because they are meaningless in this conversation. So it's just my personal pet peeve. Everybody go ahead, do what you will with the vote otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Hanafin, Precinct 2. I kind of, we, we got to use a little bit of common sense here. Like, I think it was Hannibal Lecter that said, like, what is it that we covet? That which we see every day? So if we're, I want you to think about like the center of Burlington, right? This is kind of a death by a thousand cuts type of thing. We've been working on this for a long time. It started back in 2017, and it keeps coming back. And it's going to keep coming. And where it's going to end up is at the smoke shop in the center of town, right in between True North and the ice cream shop, is my biggest concern. And that's the, that's what's coming. And that's what the intent of this is over time. All right? So just kind of think of that in, in that respect. We want to take the pulse of the town of Burlington. I think we already did. All right? We have the pulse of the town of Burlington. We go back just a few years, not that long ago. I know we've gone through Amageddon and back again since that time, but to the tune of, I think it was like 76% of the voting population in Burlington, 73% of the voting population in Burlington voted not to have this.
No.
Okay? So what's that? Am I wrong?
Yes, you're wrong.
Okay, 55. I'm sorry, I had my numbers wrong. In any event, we voted against it, all right? In the town of Burlington here. The constituents did speak, and one of the things that the proponent, Mr. Seaguard, spoke about was, he said he wanted us to remember one thing, that we need regulation. We have regulation. We regulated already. We decided not to have this in the town of Burlington. This body did that not too long ago. I think we should stick with that. And if somebody has to drive to Bill Ricker, they also have to drive to Bill Ricker to go to a strip club. And they might have to go to North Reading to go to some porn shop or whatever else. I don't, those are things that we're trying to keep out of Burlington, I would think, I hope. And I don't want those in Burlington. I don't want this in Burlington. Because the future of Burlington, I don't think looks like this. I've heard the terms Arlington, Cambridge, Somerville, Boston, and a bunch of other cities, more than I've heard the word Burlington tonight. I don't want to be any of those places. I want to be Burlington. And Burlington is getting away from itself, I think, with this type of, of thing. I, I don't, I don't want to see this. To speak to what Selectman Tiggie said earlier, I do see this on the ground in Burlington all the time. There was one of our members that have been, our longest member around that I can remember over there, I won't mention her by name, but I remember her standing up after the vote that we had in town for this, and she said, if I had only known, then I would have been smelling marijuana at Simons Park and driving everywhere I go on my bike, I never would have voted for this. I think this is going to be one of those things in the town of Burlington, like, think about when you're at a red light, you're driving through everybody else's smoke, right? That's going to happen. It's here, whatever. But I don't think that we should put it in the parking lot in the center of town or wherever we're going to decide to put this, because it's just going to be more of it. All right? If, you know, we're looking at the numbers in Woburn, it's $200,000. All right? $200,000 is not that much money for the effect that it's going to have in town. I really do not think that this is the right move for the town of Burlington. You want to smoke marijuana, go ahead. Do it, do it legally, whatever, whatever you want to do. But a lot of the stuff that we're pulling off of kids in town are coming from legal dispensary containers. All right? And they also came from the medical marijuana containers that we were pulling off kids in the town of Burlington as well. All right? So that's direct, like, you've heard a lot of anecdotes from people about different things. That's direct anecdotes from me. All right? And you see, you hear the same thing from every cop in Burlington. All right? So I just do not think this is the right thing for Burlington. Hopefully, you won't either. There's a lot more that I could say about it, but I'll leave it at that, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sarah Walinsky, Precinct 5. I have two reasons I intend to vote against this. First of all, I have extremely strong opinions on the matter, which I'll get to in a minute, but I'm really trying hard to listen to others, and I have no idea what my constituents think. I would like to know what they think before I impose my views on them, but that's no longer an option. So the reasons why I oppose this. I am a parent of four, what's called emerging adults, people between the ages of 18 and 23. Five years ago, I had never heard the term cannabis use disorder. But now I know, anecdotally, every one of my kids knows somebody who has serious problems with cannabis. With all due respect to your statistics, Mr. Seaguard, there's probably some correlation, not causation. Also, that's one study. Like, where did that come from? Is that NIH? Is that something I can believe? I couldn't even read the font at the bottom of the, of the page. I'd like to know more details on any kind of claims like that, that are supposed to sway our opinions. With regard to the money angle, that to me is completely irrelevant. Given the size of the capital projects we have before us, the police station, Fox Hill, high school, $300,000 is a tiny drop in the bucket. We should be not making policy decisions on that small amount of money, which really isn't going to help us with these huge, huge costs we face. Furthermore, I would argue that that $300,000, which we rake in on sales, that, the cost of that, the true cost of that is amortized over the many families who invisibly struggle with cannabis use disorder with their kids. They're paying for therapists for their kids to try and deal with this in their lives. It's great the town gets that money, but someone is actually paying the cost out of sight. So that's what I have to say. I plan to vote no.
Thank you. Pick up some people up at the back. Mr. DeBona. And then we'll get Mr. Connors.
Jeff DeBona, Precinct 3. We need to stop letting the grass grow under our feet. Motion to move the question.
We have a house full of poets tonight. All right, there is a motion on the floor to move the question. There's a second to it, yes. All right. Two-thirds required. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed. I guess we'll, I guess we'll have to have a standing count on this. If we could get a couple people who can count with their shoes on. All right, all those in favor of moving the question, please stand. Should have just had them do this. Stand to please if you, if you want to move the question, is what's in front of us. All right. I got hers. All right. Sit down, please. All those not in favor of moving the question. 67 in favor and 23 opposed. The motion passes. Brings us to a vote on the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion. Actually, all those in favor, please stand. Make it a little easier for me to make a judgment here. Is that, right there? Really? You don't know what the motion is, Monty? What have you been talking about? All right. Sorry. All right. Okay, thank you. All those opposed. We'll have to have another count. All right, sit down, please. All those in favor, please stand. Yes, all those in favor of the motion, please stand. That's what we're voting on. Thank you. All right. All those opposed, please stand. 10, 25, 26. They got 46, 44. There being 46 in favor and 44 opposed, the motion passes. I need seven people to stand if you want a roll call. All right. Okay. Okay, precinct suicide with precinct one. Peter, what's your name, sorry, Peter? Abish Coran.
No.
No. Mimi Bix Island. What was that? Abstained?
Yeah.
All right. William Boyven.
Yes.
Christopher Campbell.
Yes.
Lori Glance.
No.
Nolan Glance. Jamie Greitzer. Michael Hardy. Michelle Huntoun.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Florence Leone.
No.
Bruce Mori.
No.
Shannon Robinson.
Yes.
Gregory Ryan. Maureen Ryan. Adam Sinessi. David Waddila. Catherine Byer. Kathleen Calucci. Kevin Calucci. Doug Davison.
No.
TJ Flynn. Daniel Hanafin.
No.
Jeremy Harrington. Michelle Papano.
No.
There was a no, thank you. Cynthia Phillips.
No.
Myrna Smalt Saltman. Kimberly Traynor. Sean Connors.
Yes.
Jeffrey DeBona.
Yes.
Richard DeBona.
Yes.
Sherri Ellis.
No.
Joanne Fristachi.
No.
Chris Hartling.
Abstained.
Sharon Laurie. Steve Marchesi. William McCarthy.
Yes.
Melinda Meyer. Mildred Nash.
No.
I thought you were.
What one?
Ask Melinda Meyer.
She called before that, abstained, and then she said no.
Okay.
We just need to make sure we got the right.
So what was Melinda Meyer?
Melinda Meyer said no, is that correct?
That's incorrect, it said abstained.
Abstained, okay. All right. Then we get to Mildred Nash, who says no. Paul Noonan.
Yes.
Monty Pearson.
Yes.
Daniel Raski.
Hello.
Mr. Commissioner?
Is there a way to get it on what the [inaudible].
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I don't know what, why that disappeared. Let me get this here. There you go.
All right, Mr. Raski, I got Roger Riggs.
No.
Kate Asher.
Yes.
Nancy Bonassera. Mark Gerbrans. Christine Kim. William Lassano.
Oh, just a second. What was Christine Kim?
Christine Kim was a no.
Okay. William Lassano.
He's a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tamara Maniscalco. David Miller. Frank Monaco.
No.
Laura Nichols.
Yes.
Becky Norum.
Yes.
Michael Prue.
Yes.
Kevin Spielberg.
Yes.
Christine Warren.
Abstained.
What was that?
Abstained.
Abstained, all right. Sally Willard. Precinct 5. Pat Angelo. Carl Foss. Phyllis Newfeld.
Yes.
Michelle Prendergast.
Yes.
Alex Rutfield.
Yes.
David Tate.
No.
Frank Orsino.
No.
Zee Wang.
Yes.
Richard Wing.
No.
Sarah Walensky.
No.
All right, precinct 6. Roger Bell.
Yes.
Jason Brooks.
Yes.
Ryan Clement. Dan Duttucci.
Yes.
Elizabeth Duttucci.
Yes.
Daniel Duttucci Jr.
Yes.
Corey Everett.
Yes.
James Fraxick. John Eiler.
No.
Darrell Interess. Gary Caskey.
No.
Blaze Lieber.
Yes.
Rose Manny.
No.
Ed Parsons. William Trelegan. Adrian Callahan.
Sir.
What?
No, sir.
Come on.
No, you said no.
I said no.
Thank you, I couldn't hear you. You could say three, seven more, I still can't hear. That was a no, okay. Betsy Hughes. Jack Kelly.
No.
Neil Espasio. Kerry Riley.
Yes.
Ronald Riley.
Yes.
Jonathan Sacks.
Yes.
Anthony Salamoni. Mark Smuckler.
No.
David Van Camp.
No.
David Webb.
No.
Mark Woods.
Oh, you miss Karen Cooper.
Precinct 4.
Karen Cooper.
Precinct 4.
She didn't go.
Yep, I did miss you, sorry, Karen. Karen Cooper. I'm busy.
Oh, you miss Paul Schwartzman.
We have a vote.
Precinct 7.
Paul, you're not signed in.
Yeah, just sign in.
All right, Paul, what's your vote? Anybody else that got missed? You know, there's a reason we ask you to sign in.
The total should actually be 90.
44 and 46.
There being 44 in favor and 46 opposed, the motion fails.
Thank you, everybody.
Listen, if we don't, if we go a third night, Amy's, Amy's husband has said she has to quit Friday. We don't want that, so we need to finish quickly. Okay, article number 18. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant, about an animal control officer, to see if the town will amend the bylaws. Board of Selectmen, oh, excuse me, the Select Board, wherever you are.
They want to make jokes. Select Board voted 5-0 in favor.
Thank you. Do we have a General Bylaw Review Committee vote? We got a microphone here, thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis Newfeld, Vice Chair. We voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who took a vote on this? Anyone who wishes to speak on it? Mr. D'Nizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In an effort to clean up an old, outdated bylaw, this was submitted with the help from Town Council. The bylaw, as you can see, is a simple change. It hasn't operated the way it's been written in quite some time. I believe the chief said over 30 years. So what we're trying to do is to memorialize or codify our current practice, so that the bylaw matches what we've actually been doing for all this time. And you'll see that the change is to, to make the animal control officer work under the Police Department, under the direction of the Police Chief, as it has for a long time, and also to change to not have that person have to be a resident of the town. Thank you.
Questions from the body? Zee Wang.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Zee Wang, Precinct 5. I have one concerned question. So what exactly the description of animal control officer? I know it's probably common sense, but we really don't have any information on our website, compared to a town like Lexington, you know, there's basically just a phone number. So what happened, I just have to tell you the story. We have a resident about a month ago have a dead coyote in their backyard, and then tried to call Animal Control, then they say, well, the resident was told that it's on your property, you have to handle it yourself, so either throw it in the trash can or bury it in your own yard. And then, that was a big animal. So when that happened, our resident should have called Animal Control, I assume, but then, you know, the resident tried to contact Department of Public Health, that, then it got back to the animal control again. So some other town like Lexington, you know, there's a specific description, say, if you do have a dead animal, put it on the curb, you know, Animal Control, they will pick it up, you know? So this is something, I just want to make sure, if we have some concerned complaints, or should we call the Police Chief now, or should we call the Select Board? Thank you.
The Select Board is always willing to hear everyone's complaints, specifically the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll answer two out of the three questions. I'll leave the last one to somebody else to answer. But what I should have done in explaining it, with the animal control officer that we're talking about in this bylaw, is a designation by the state, so we have to have someone that is designated as the animal control officer with, with the state, so that's their contact person. This is not to be confused with the actual person that is our employee, that is a union position, that is the actual, performs the duties of the animal control officer. That person works under the direction of the Police Department, and that's who you would call in those cases, and I'm not going to answer the last part of the question.
Anything further from the body? Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sherri Ellis, Precinct 3. I applaud this move, and I applaud the hiring of Jamie, that you did that as well. I did want to ask a question. I know that the animal control officer, we've talked about this in previous town meetings, is required to fill out certain state forms, and I just want to know if they are doing that at this point in time. Thank you.
Yes. Chief.
Chief?
I can say the chief was nodding in the affirmative.
In that case, yes. Anything further? All right, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to Article 19. It's moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and I hope it says printed in the, oh, here was my picture here. And it is as printed in the warrant, is to amend general bylaws regarding the Land Use Committee. Mr. Waddilla?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dave Webb. Precinct 7, and Land Use Committee, and I've been asked to present this for the Land Use Committee. This article is a revision, and hopefully this won't be as controversial as the marijuana. This article is a revision and update to general bylaws, Article 5, Section 2.6, involving the Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee decided that a complete revision of this section was needed to better define the definition and purpose of the committee. This action, this article broadens the purview of the Land Use Committee beyond the current bylaw text. Provides a summary of land use issues and their definition, the purpose or goals of the Land Use Committee and its composition. These things were not very specific in, in the previous bylaw. Over the last several decades, the Burlington Land Use Committee has worked on advising the town many important topics, and recently on topics such as sustainable development, climate change issues such as flooding and heat islands, and electricity aggregation for the town. The Land Use Committee has liaisons with the Town's Planning Board, Select Board, Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, Conservation Commission, and makes recommendations to the Board's committees in town meeting as appropriate. So I ask for your yes vote on this. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
General bylaw, would you take a position on this? Have a microphone here, please.
Phyllis Newfeld, the GBRC, voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Okay. Anybody else take a position on this? Well, hopefully.
Land use was unanimous in voting for it.
No, it wasn't, I don't think, was it? Mr. Waddilla, what was your vote of your committee?
Dave Waddilla, Land Use Committee. I don't have the specific number, it was a majority.
Okay. Questions from the body on this? Mr. Bell, and then Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Roger Bell, Precinct 6. So if it was a majority, then obviously we had some people that were not in favor. Can we get the opposing thoughts on why they didn't want this revision?
Mr. Waddilla, is there someone who wishes to provide a minority report?
I do not. Does somebody else want to provide a?
Well, someone needs to summarize why people voted against it. Mr. Webb, if you're making the presentation, that's up to you.
I think that the only vote against, there was no vote against it, it was only an absentee. Abstained. There was no vote against it. Okay.
You guys sure? Do you need to consult your records? Okay. Well, we're still looking for comments from the body. Who has questions? Oh, Mr. Monaco, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. I am opposed to this simply because land use is a, it's been in existence for a long time as a subcommittee of town meeting. It's been able to do its job. And this feels to me like encroachment on the Selectmen, the Planning Board. It just doesn't make sense. We don't need to do this. You're, you're extending things beyond the size of the hat. And I would leave land use alone the way it is, with the, under the moderator, to do the job it's always done. Thank you.
Anything further?
John Sacks, Precinct 7. My understanding is that land use can only make recommendations. I mean, they don't have any power of enforcing or making rules or anything. So I don't see how they can step on the feet of anybody. All they can do is say yes or no, in our opinion. So I don't see restructuring them as being a problem.
I'll bite my tongue. Anything further from Zee Wang? Are you on the committee? No, he's, sorry. Your committee's had its, had its shot. Committee speaks to the Chair or its designated speaker. Thank you. Mr. Davison.
Doug Davison, Precinct 2. I guess my question, and forgive my ignorance, but does land use hear from the same groups that might go before the Planning Board? Do they hear from a developer or somebody that's trying to, to do something like that? Through the moderator?
Mr. Webb? Or Mr. Waddilla? Whichever, which one of you wishes to speak.
Typically on items, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dave Waddilla, Chairman of the Land Use Committee. Typically on items that come before a town meeting that are, you know, the gold pages of land use, we will hear from the proponents on those items. We will debate them, and we will render a decision that we bring to the meeting, as I've done these last two nights.
Sure, but no, no, through the moderator, no, no special permits, no, you know, it's advisory to this body.
Simply to this body, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, all town meeting committees that I appoint are advisory to, only to town meeting.
Jack Kelly, Precinct 7. Can the Land Use Committee require a proponent to come before them and maybe spend money hiring council? Or what happens if a proponent of a project ignores them and doesn't show up?
Then they can vote against it.
In advisory capacity only.
Mr. Campbell.
Chris Campbell, Precinct 1. I guess this is a point of clarification, if it is. So I'm a Ways and Means member, and I purposely don't sit with Ways and Means because I feel like in town meeting, I sit here as a town meeting member. So I just, I guess my question is, couldn't Zee speak as a town meeting member and not as a member of land use? As it did happen with, I think, Mr. DeBona here, at least tonight as well.
It is the operating, the way this body has operated for a long time is that committee members speak through their chair. If they insist on speaking individually, they can. But my strong preference is committees work through their chair, and they should speak through the chair. Yes? Does that preclude her from speaking? No, if she wishes to speak, I will recognize her.
You use the term "for a long time." How many years was that? Three, two?
Many.
When did you start that policy?
It's been a while, at least eight.
Can I have a number, please?
No, how about eight? Is that good enough?
Yes, I don't believe it, but that's a number.
Zee Wang, go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everyone. I just want to say, whatever in this article is the stuff we're already doing, we have been doing. We just want to update it and then make it more specific so all of you can see what we, what our responsibility is. So I, I just want you guys to read it thoroughly and then approve this, and then support us. That's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Anything further? Mr. Van Kamp.
Dave Van Kamp, Precinct 7. And I do support the Land Use Committee. You do a great job. Thank you very much. I did want some clarification on something. I've been hearing that, well, this is just what we've always done, and we're just clarifying things, and we're not going to be influencing policy. But in Section 263, I see a clause shellacking an advisory capacity for town meeting on land use issues as well as introduce bylaw amendments relating to land use matters. That seems to me like they're taking an active role. They're actually changing. Maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but that gave me pause.
Any comment from the committee?
Dave Waddilla, Precinct 1, Land Use Chair. Exactly. That is the piece of the legislation that you should be looking at, you should be deciding upon. Thank you.
Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I was a member, Shari Ellis, Precinct 3. I was a member of land use for many years before the ZBRC was formed. And when we formed the ZBRC, it was because we wanted a group of people to look at the actual zoning bylaw languages. We left the Land Use Committee to deal with rezonings and how land is used. And so if there is a bylaw that comes before the town that's talking about, say, retail marijuana, and where that should go in the town, you'll all be dealing with that in May, I won't. Or I guess we won't be dealing with it in May, whenever. But, so they are dealing with those type of issues. And if they want to bring forward a bylaw to amend one of our zoning bylaws because they feel that a better land use can be used, that would be one of their things they could do. And that's something that Zoning Bylaw Review brought forward an article for signage. So that's something that town meeting can do. We write the bylaws, that's our job. So this is something that they're doing. We can thank land use in part for our lower electrical usage rates because they worked on that aggregation program. So I think you should support this article and support Land Use Committee. Thank you.
Anything additional? Seeing nothing. Let's put this to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Before we can adjourn, we have a, there's been a request to make a motion to reconsider Article 8 by Mr. Richard DeBona. Article 8, the mixed-use zoning. This requires, this requires a two-thirds vote to reconsider it. Or middle, whatever it is. Article 8, look it up.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I believe there has to be new information to have a reconsideration. Is there?
Our bylaw doesn't require it, but it sure should be.
Yeah, that's a mistake. Thank you.
Talk to the Bylaw Review Committee.
So it's middle housing?
Okay, it's the middle housing. Okay. So we have a motion in front of us to reconsider this issue. Is there any discussion on that? It was seconded, yes.
Yes, you have to vote first.
Okay. All those in favor of reconsidering? All those opposed? Here we go, the magical words we've been waiting for. We adjourn, thank you all for your attention tonight.